Okay, I'll call to order the Wednesday, December 4th, 2024 Finance Meeting Agenda. We have lots of transfers which typically happen at the end of the year to consider. But first off, you should have all received the minutes of the November 6th, 2024 Finance Committee meeting. Are there any corrections or changes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the November 6th minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First up is Commissioner Jeff Plaster, who... It says here to transfer $389.78. From legal ads to Commissioner tax sale.
Correct.
Talk about that one.
We're jumping through some hoops here to be able to take advantage of an overpayment out of the Commissioner's tax sale fund. So we need to transfer some money from our legal ads into the Commissioner tax sale line of $389.78. We will then be able to use the overpayment credit to pay for additional legal ads with the newspaper.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second thing is an increase in our payment to Centerstone, which was not reflected in the budget. And so we would like to transfer $35,934 from workers' comp claims. And we're in the final month of the year, so we don't foresee there being a problem. There's, I think, about $70,000 available there now to Centerstone to make the final December payment to Centerstone.
I don't have that on my agenda.
It's not on the agenda, but it did come for us. And it is a transfer that we're obligated to do. So any other questions for Jeff? If not, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Two quick other things if I could. I'm sorry. Number one, I wanted to tell you all in person that the holiday lunch has been scheduled for next Wednesday, 11 to 1:00. It has been communicated. I hope it's sent out to staff.
Yes, it's now to staff.
So we'll get it out again, but the Commissioners are providing the meat for the lunch and the staff is bringing dishes. I'm going to bring deviled eggs, just in case you want to make sure not to eat any of those, but I'm going to make those myself.
Sure you are.
And I think you wash your hands before you make them and then again afterwards, maybe? I'll ask Cheryl. So anyway, I hope you can come by for a few minutes at least to celebrate the holidays with us. The other thing Barry asked to discuss where we're at with WUR. The Commissioners did pass the first of two resolutions to withdraw from the organization. Since it is set up as a regional organization, our withdrawal will in fact begin the process of dissolution of WUR. We're working with Union County and we plan for 2025 to be a transitional year where the county will take on and manage the responsibilities of WUR and continue pretty much as they have been for that final year. We will begin work in Wayne County with the city working with us and Richmond Sanitary District to provide some expanded opportunities for recycling throughout the county. Events that take place, special recycling events. I've already talked to Union County Commissioners that those would be available and open to Union County residents with ID, just like we do now. They will not happen in Union County. They'll happen in Wayne County, but Union County residents will be able to participate. I am meeting this Friday morning with the Union County Commissioners at their meeting to discuss this further. And I've been talking to Tim Williams, the President of the Union County Commissioners, for months now, actually years, as this thing has unfolded. There will continue to be the need for an organizing committee to help with some of the special projects that we would do. It will not be a board. We're still working on how the staffing might go. We do anticipate having at least a part-time staff. There will be two people for this year, a full-time and a part-time position, as there is now. And when I say for this year, I mean for 2025, as we transition. Those staff people may find places with one of our partnering organizations. We'll see how everything shakes out, but we've been working on this for a long time. There are some definite benefits to Wayne County to withdraw from the organization, and that's our intention.
Thank you.
Barry, as the President of that Board, has been working closely with us and I assume will continue in his role as Chief Volunteer. Obviously Kathy Williams has been very involved in that, as has Gary Saunders. Probably Gary has the longest tenure on that Board of anyone living, so he's been on that Board for a long time.
I would like to say I've been on that Board for 20 years. This new plan, thrilled to death. What it is possibly going to be able to do in Wayne County is for recycling. I could offer so much more than what we're able to offer through WUR. Thank you, Jeff, for what you've worked on.
Thanks, Gary.
Safe travels. Jeff headed off to Commissioners Conference.
Thank you very much.
Okay, back to me. Next up is the Sheriff, and there are a number of transfers. Sheriff, the first one is $2,700, transfer from in the jail budget, 10-959 Council General to 12-251 County General Deputy, both deputies. So we're transferring from a deputy to deputy.
Correct. The... What happened on that, just in short, earlier in the year, money was transferred out of that line item to pay for some medical expenses. I don't know if you recall that or not, but nevertheless, it ran, because of the end of the year, ran that line item short to pay that employee, and we want to make sure that that gets corrected so we can continue paying them.
Is that in jail or enforcement?
Jail.
I'd move to approve the transfer.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. I do want to say that to the Auditor's Office, on these forms down at the bottom, it says Council does not need to approve.
The ones that have updated online, so they need to use the forms.
Okay, so now all future forms.
It's all correct online.
Okay. Is that on the portal that people have access to?
Yeah, everybody has access to the Auditor's forms.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Councilman Smith, I did say that was jail. I'll be honest with you, I'm not 100% positive now that I'm looking at that, but I will give you that information.
And we need to know which one it is here.
Okay.
Next up is in the jail budget, account number 12-301, civilian correctional, transfer $300 into 12-081 Deputy.
And this transfer, as well as listed C and D also, all of those are a result of employees that left earlier in the year, and they were given payouts for what accrued time that they had for vacation and whatnot, again, which left that line item short, and we're just making those corrections to continue to pay their replacements.
Move for approval.
Second. And on it then, we're not... We're okay on the PAM, on the... PAM? On the salary ordinance, we're fine that we're paying this. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one is the same thing, or the same type of transfer. It's from 12-040 Patrolman for $4,700, transferring into 11-970 Sergeant 4,700. Are there any questions for the Sheriff? If not, we're good. But that would be enforcement, is that right?
That one is, yes.
About a shortfall in budgeting?
No, it's, as I explained on the previous transfer, it was an individual that left earlier in the year. They were paid out for time accrued, vacation time that they had gotten that they hadn't spent, and then that created a shortfall in that line item, so it was not a budgeting issue.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I think it was Gary.
Whoever we want to give it to.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the same type of deal. It's an enforcement, account number 10-820, Civil Process Secretary 2,400, transferring into 10-941 Detective Secretary, the 2,400.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, there, it is from some different lines, and it would appear that it would be a transfer from account 33670 Equipment Vehicle Maintenance, $18,000, going into 22500 Field Equipment Supplies, $18,000, the three of these. The second would be a transfer from 33621 Vehicle Maintenance for $2,000, transferring that into 22500 Field Equipment Supplies. And the third one would be a transfer in from line item 33360 Meals for Inmates, $25,000, transferring that into 33510 Utilities for the $25,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. And I think that's it.
There's only one other item that I wanted to bring to your attention. In the account 22500, we have $60,000 that's earmarked for the purchase of drones, and we've spoken about those several times. We're working with the Commissioners and trying to go through the bid process and under accounting purchasing policy to get those done correctly, but I'm not 100% confident we're going to be able to get it invoiced to us before the end of the year to be able to do that.
Today's the last day, so you won't be able to.
Well, so the possibility to encumber that money into next year, or if you have another suggestion, certainly open.
Well, if you have an agreement or a sign by the end of the year, theoretically you should be able to encumber it so that that would be paid out.
Okay.
If you get a bill, we'll pay it.
Okay.
But if you don't, if you get an agreement, then we will uncover it for you.
Okay, perfect.
If not, we would just deal with it next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and do note that the money that was deposited into that account, $55,000, was an agreement from the Commissioners on opioid settlement money. So just so you understand that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is the Treasurer, Nancy Funk. She's wanting to do some year-end cleanup in transferring $3,410.83 from 13-480 Part-Time, $4,712.51 from 13-490 Part-Time, which is the second person, and then transferring $58.61 from 10-902 Second Deputy for a total transferring out of $8,181.95, transferring that to 10-100 Elected Official.
It is where I was told to find the money to pay out my sick days. I had 88 sick days, and a third of those equal that money, so I had enough in my 1,000 accounts to transfer to cover it.
Okay. Any questions for Nancy? Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nancy, you will be very missed. Yes, Nancy, you've done an excellent job and you appreciate it. The interest you've raised on the funds that we have invested has a significant impact on our financial health here.
But 35 years is enough.
We appreciate it.
Yes.
How many Mondays?
Well, I'm down to 26 or 7 days, so you know, give or take.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay.
Tony, I do have a question. Since Nancy was here about her, you know, her sick days, do we have other people that may have that issue and don't have the money in the budget somewhere? Do we have a list of those? I thought Max was working with PM or somebody.
Talked to PM about that, and I don't... There is not any that we're aware of that should have a problem.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Debbie Berry has a doctor's appointment this morning, and she called me about this transfer, so I can help you with that if you need.
Okay. This one is from the Clerk's Office, and it's transferring $1,300 from 33230 Travel, Meals, and Lodging, and also transferring $1,011 from 12-940 Alternate Instruction, and going into those two amounts totaling $2,311, going into 12-950, and I don't have a description.
It doesn't say a description, but that is, I believe that's payments to workers for the election, because you remember, we had to give her extra money for the election, and it even went over $2,311. And so she's just covering that to get that all paid.
Okay, and you said it was for...
She told me it was extra jury pay, or not jury pay, election worker pay.
Full workers.
Full workers, yeah.
Okay.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion, a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have Gary Callahan, who's here. His first transfer, he's got a bunch of cleanups. The first one is transferring from the following accounts. Account number 33230 Travel Lodging and Meals, $933.67. Line item 33670 Equipment Service, $166.23. Line item 33230 Travel Lodging and Meals, $40.53. And line item 22150 Equipment Supplies, $93.24. Those would be transferring into line item 33810 Dues, Fees, and Subscriptions, $933.67. Line item 33890 Training, $166.23. Line item 33890 Training for $40.53. And line item 33890 Training for $93.24. And it's to pay the 2025 ICAA membership dues and to pay 2025 ICA Winter Conference fees. Anything to add on that?
No.
Any questions for Gary?
Hi, Gary.
Hi.
Say hi to him when he came up here.
You start talking, so I didn't say anything.
Well, I'll move for approval of those transfers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good morning, everyone, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Gordon Moore is not here. His request is to transfer from account number 50,000, 1,369.58 into 00900, $1,369.58. It's repayment of a loan from General Drain Improvement Fund, Fall Collection. So move.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. And this would be pending the Commissioners' approval. There's not a signature on here from the Commissioners, but pending the Commissioners' approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Then Matthew Kane is here this morning. Good morning, Matthew. His request is in EMA-911 to transfer from line item 13-480 Part-Time Communication Specialist, $4,500, transferring into line item 13-640 Overtime, $4,500. All those, and this would also be subject to the Commissioners' approval. There's not a Commissioner's signature on here. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matthew.
Thanks for coming, Gordon. We got you taken care of.
Next time. Next up, we have Mike Sharp from the Highway Department. Good morning, Mike.
Morning.
His request is to transfer to Fund 1173 Road Signs and Related, line item 22230 Stone and Gravel, $2,000, transferring into 22440 Road Signs and Related, the same $2,000. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Motion, a second to approve. The Commissioners have signed this form, so I think we're good from here, Mike. Appreciate you coming in, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We got another one.
We got two more.
Another two more.
Yeah.
The next one is to fund Social Security and Retirement. Line item 22230 Stone and Gravel, $17,000, transferring into, that $17,000, transferring $14,000 into 13-650 Social Security, and into $3,000 into 13-660 Retirement. Anything to add, Mike?
Nope, this is just cleaning up. The money wasn't... One, salaries were set for 24. Nobody transferred money to cover the end of it, so this is just making sure we're covered for the...
Cover the raises that we're getting last year. Right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. The Commissioners have approved this one already, so it will be final. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You got one more? Yes, you do have one more.
But on that one...
You got amended?
I'm going to make an amendment. I talked to Jeff this morning. He told me to go ahead and present that one to you guys. So it's raising it $1,000 after we got some of the bills in. It's transferring from gasoline, fuel, lubricants to paint. After we got some of the bills in, there was some, it was year-end for painting our trucks and so forth, but there was some year-end. They charged some shipping and handling fees and stuff that wasn't figured into the final price, so I think it's like $400 or something, but I said, well, let's just, we got plenty of money to transfer. We're just going to transfer an extra $1,000, make sure we get all that covered so we don't go in the red. Jeff told me to go ahead and ask you to approve the $9,000.
Right, it will need, the Commissioners will need to approve it, Jeff will need to sign it, but as far as Council's concerned, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion, a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just want to say how nice that building looks. It looks really good. Whoever helped design how you painted things and all, it looks really, really nice.
My wife picked out the colors. It wasn't me.
She did a good job.
On another note, or did you pass that?
Yeah.
Okay, on another note, on the ARPA funds, I know Jeff touched on a little bit about the overrun that's going to be from the fuel tanks and so forth. I didn't know if you guys agreed with it, that we could go ahead and pay those bills, but I thought it was already done once, but he told me I needed to come back to Council to make sure you guys are okay to take the run over, which it would be $36,540.45 that's going to run over on the fuel tanks to pay it out, that $300,000. From that $300,000, I'm not sure what was on your sheets, but there should be $64,053.17 left on that part.
I think we agreed to that when...
Clear for Beth to pay those bills if you guys are, Commissioners approved to do that, but they said I need to come back to you. I thought you guys already approved it once.
Yeah, Jeff brought it back for all the changes, and we approved it earlier in the... in the council meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Tony, one thing before Mike leaves, I don't have my copy of that. If we approved the transfer policy for the Highway Department, you would no longer, I want to congratulate this Mike, the bottom part, you would no longer have to come before us to transfer between 1173 and the 1176.
I think you already do that, right? You, you handle that.
After you guys changed the policy, I took them-
Oh, okay, okay.
To do all the transfers.
Gotcha. So you would no longer have to, if we, if we adopt that in the end of this month. I just want to make sure you knew that.
It might be a good idea just to notify us and let us know that you have done that.
Sure.
That way we've got an idea what's, what's happening. Okay. Yeah, and like at the beginning of the year, so everything is done in the, the budget you approve, everything's done in the unrestricted, and then we transfer money from that, the budget that you approve, in January I'll go through and I transfer everything to the restricted funds. So, you'll have a lot of transfers to do if, if you do not pass that, so.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Hopefully we will.
Okay. Getting here towards the end, we have a request from the auditor, shortfall in reference books, so he's transferring from 22110 Office Supplies in the amount of $100.37, transferring from 33230 Travel $37.73, transferring from 33670 Equipment Maintenance $689.76, transferring from 33810 Dues $22.60, transferring from 33890 Training $50 even, transferring all of those amounts into 22470 Reference Books, a total of $900.46.
Move approved, yeah.
Second.
Motion a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's taken care of. Next up, I, I know your agenda has run out, but I, I do have a couple others here, and the surveyor actually had a second request. It was to transfer from 33890 Staff Training and Education $500, transferring into 33810 Due Subscription and Fees, that $500 for additional funding was needed for a new membership fee and increased fees.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Max, second by Barry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I screw that up?
It was Gary and Barry.
Gary and Barry, okay.
It's okay.
Well, Bobby, Bobby's got it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried, and we got one, one more transfer here. It's from the Recorder's Office, and it is transferring from 33670 Equipment Maintenance Service Contracts $535.45 into $50,000, the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund $535.45, was saving money from Equipment Maintenance for Service Contract on Copier. We used RPF for other service contracts, the contract we were waiting for changed and didn't see all of the other money, left purchase on new copies, saved us money on the service contract. If that makes sense. So, here it's, here again, it's just an end of the year cleanup.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion by Gary, second by Jeff. I know I got that one right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I have another item completed.
Okay. Could have been, and probably should have been in the council meeting previously, but we have the salary ordinance ready for adoption. That would include the longevity ordinance as well for 2025. Amy and Pam and Kim have done a lot of work to get this together, but it's correct going into next year, but obviously there may be some changes throughout the year that we'll need to make. So I move that we approve the 2025 Salary Ordinance and the Longevity Pay Ordinance that we have read to previously.
I'll second that.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Tony, I think you'd already approved the ordinance, had you not-
The salary ordinance? Not yet.
Not the salary ordinance, but we had the longevity ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, you, you already approved the longevity ordinance.
Yeah.
But it's attached to this.
It's a part of this.
Incorporated in that, I know.
Yes. And I, I'll pass this around for everyone to sign.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the finance committee? If not?
I wouldn't have much fun, I don't want to roll on a derby. Move for a derby.
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Word adjourn. Thank you.